I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council meeting, Monday, October 16th, 2023, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item number one, pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and omnipotent.
So we'll call Madam Secretary.
Councillor Adams.
Present.
Councillor Chenier.
Present.
Councillor Daniel.
Present.
Councillor Dow.
Excuse.
Councillor Lazo.
Present.
Councillor Marquetti.
Present.
Councillor Montigny.
Present.
Councillor Ortiz.
Present.
Councillor Rivas.
Present.
Lieutenant Quarrel. Moving on to number three, consider and accept the town council meeting minutes, Monday, September 25th, 2023.
So move.
Seconded by Adams, seconded by Montigny.
Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of that meeting? Councillor Chenier.
Yes, underlining number 22, protections of persons or property. I believe it's a typo error. Chenier, Lazo reported on the activities.
Is it you?
Yeah.
Are there any other additions, corrections, or deletions to Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, under Councillor Adams, Councillor's forum. Line number two, DESI. It's D-E-S-E. That's it.
Are there any other additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
One abstained, Councillor Daniels. Moving on to subcommittees. Subcommittee report, A, Department of Public Works, Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting here October 11th. Our items, number nine, 10, 11, 13, 17 through 19, and number 25 are on tonight's agenda. We do not have one scheduled, and I'll discuss both, all those, when it comes to my turn. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to Education Services, Councillor Rivas.
We have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, the 18th, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Moving on to C, General Government, Councillor Montigny.
Thank you. We had a meeting last Wednesday, the 11th, and we have some items in the agenda I'll speak to later, and we have another meeting likely to be scheduled next week, probably Monday or Wednesday before the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Planning and Development, Councillor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting on Wednesday, October 11th. Agenda items 20 through 24 will be addressed this evening, and we're talking about $2,600,000 worth of grants that we're going to be looking at.
Thank you. Moving on to protections of persons or property, Councillor Chenier.
No report, no meeting schedule at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to Chairman's announcements. I'd just like to take a minute to have a moment of silence for Christo Athanas, a veteran, a town citizen for many years. He was over 108 years old, the oldest citizen in the town of Southbridge. He had a son that served as chairman of the council and a son that served as a firefighter in the town of Southbridge and transferred to New York. I'd just like to take a moment of silence for Christo Athanas. Thank you very much. I have no announcements at this time. Moving on to Town Manager's announcements. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I've liked to do, is provide an update to the council as well as the community. First, we had a couple resignations, Karen Selig from the Council of Agent, Wisher the Best, as well as a resignation from Debbie Gendrow, the circulation supervisor at the library. We do have a candidate that has filled out an application to go on to the Council of Agent, and that is going to be brought forward on the meeting on Wednesday night. And the position as circulation supervisor was a promotion in the library. And we also had candidates for another position that we had filled with another possible candidate, and that person moved. So as of today, I'm going to knock on wood, all positions at the library are full and they're fully staffed. So that's great to hear about the library. Other staffing updates, we are still seeking any temporary snowplow drivers. We did go out to bid for the snowplow vendors. We did receive one bid, and we'll be reviewing that. And the DPW is continuing to fill positions in their department. Regards to the curbside enterprise fund, as we're aware that we have to implement the curbside enterprise fund, we have engaged calling center. We had meetings via Zoom today with several staff members. There will be also meetings on Wednesday. It was brought to my attention that some items, based on the timeliness of that enterprise fund, being impacted to the town, as well as certain regulations in Mass general law that were just brought to my attention today through the contracting of this vendor. We'll be working with council on a pretty strict time agenda to get things rolling on the institution of certain materials to that. We did have a meeting with Casella to discuss their contract ending in the new timeline, as well as working with Anna Smith in regards to the changes that will occur in March. So we are planning a campaign to educate everyone. In regards to some projects, Henry Street Field, the press box is slated for demolition this week and completion by November 30th, 2023. Mails on Wheels, an update to the council on Mails on Wheels. I did receive an email today from Lisa Prince, the executive director. They will be relocated to Center of Hope on West Street. That should be completed by the end of the month. That is only going to be a temporary solution for them until they find something permanent, and I offered my continued assistance and our assistance in the future if needed. Regards to Mill Street property, the fencing that we purchased as a town has been installed by Michael Julian with some assistance from some of the tenants that actually live in that area, as well, I believe, Department of Public Works. So that entire area has been fenced off. They'll be looking to signage. They're going to be doing a sweep of the building because there were some appeared break-in, so they will be going with the police to make sure that nobody's living in there. And then they will secure the property and put up a red X indicating that the building is not occupied in case of any other emergencies. And we'll be working with our legal council, continuing on that issue. Regards, as you're aware, the town has entered into several community host agreements regarding cannabis. There's been some changes in legislation relative to the community host agreements that are going to require us as a council to take a look at. No longer are you able to have any language in there, either implied or direct about donations, as well as impact fees. So we'll be working on that language to make sure they come in compliance. I've been working, I met today with Katie Brook and have a meeting next week with Green Meadows. Regards to the Charlton Street property that council has asked about, as you're aware, that property had been secured with fencing, as well as the engineering report. The owner of that property came to the town hall on September 29th and paid back taxes in the amount of over $120,000. There may still be a small, a very small amount pending, but he has paid the substantial amount of back taxes. So at this point, based on that conversation, I don't believe the council, my recommendation would be to work with the homeowner, with that owner, to keep that project going, and we'll be working with that. Regards to the animal control shelter, the decision by the council to move it from the Charlton Street. I have been working with Chairman Lazo. We identify individuals that work in the field to put together that building committee, and hopefully we'll have that to announce at the next meeting. We had some discussion about possibility of some other land located in another part of town, but we need to vet that information out. And finally, on two things, just to make business owners in the community aware that your list, both liquor license and common vic licenses, we can come due shortly. There are certain requirements relative to inspections. Our inspections department is working on scheduling those, so make sure that whatever paperwork that you have, we're asking you to make sure that you take a look at that and schedule your inspections as soon as possible to make sure that they can accommodate them in our department. And finally, well, one, Chief Woodson had sent me a couple weeks ago a message that asked me to share to the council and to the public that he had a conversation with the chairman of civil service for police, for police in Massachusetts. And civil service chairman had indicated to him that they recognized our police department as one of the most diverse police departments in the state regarding to officers and command staff, and that they'll be working with the Southbridge Police Department as a model police department in the Commonwealth regarding diversity in our police force. So that is a credit to our department and the individuals that we have to serve the town. And finally, as a side, in the last two months, we've been very busy, but I just want to thank all, all the individuals and the council, but most importantly, the individuals that are employed by the town of Southbridge, both here in the town hall, in the community, the DPW. We have been really working to establish that team approach that I said in my interview, and to that fact that we are working with the school department and their maintenance department to address several issues, especially in the community center, to make sure that the heat is in place, because that is our emergency shelter. And Mark Latoy from the school department and Rich Benoit from the DPW have been working closely, and that's just some of the examples that I want to continue to foster in the community about the team approach and the things that we are getting done on a quick basis to make sure that we can move forward. So thank you, Mr. Manager. That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to presentations, agenda item number seven, PEGD, update on grants. Welcome, Peg.
Thank you for having me. For the public, PEGD, Economic Development and Planning Department, my title is CDBG/Economic Development Coordinator. I was hired in 2019, and I was moved in 2021 to approach grants. And so a lot of my time has been spent looking for funding to help offset the tax levy and to be able to pursue projects that we couldn't otherwise afford as a town. One of the biggest initiatives was the RAISE grant. This is a federally funded grant. Up here, I've just got a couple quick bullet points. So it's federally funded under the bipartisan infrastructure law. It's highly competitive. We went for a $10 million grant to modernize Hamilton Street. We applied in fiscal year '22. For those who aren't aware, we were, we hired BSC Group. We scored very high, but we were not awarded. We participated in the federal debrief with the contractor who helped us review where we could score higher and recommended that we reapply. Again, we scored very high in this fiscal year '22 application. In fiscal year '23, we did apply again. Fifteen percent of all applicants were awarded. Applicants were ranked by acceptable, recommended, or highly recommended. Southbridge was highly recommended. We were among the 347 applications that were highly recommended. And then from those highly rated projects, they had $5.2 billion to fund, they had $5.2 billion worth of projects that were applied for and only $2.5 billion available, so about half, less than half of the projects could be funded. So among those, Southbridge made it into the next round of 250 that were identified by this senior review team. So again, we did really well. Unfortunately, of the 250, 162 were awarded, and we were not among the 162. However, we are being recommended to reapply. The conclusion, our application rose through the ranks as a finalist. As much as I want to be proud, I'm obviously a go-getter, I'm a little frustrated, I want to see us get that money, and so hopefully we can do a better job this year of securing the funds. What we need is a champion for the project at the state and federal level. So even if we'd made it into, we make it into that final review, we need advocates there, decision makers in that room who can advocate for us, because there are decision makers in that room that can supersede the highest ranked projects if they so choose. And so where do we get those advocates from? Our state, federal legislators, any agency partners, Mass DOT, DOT. So that needs to be my number one priority. And what's next, I'm currently working with CMRPC to come up with more rigorous data to be able to build a better case for the safety. So they're doing traffic counts right now, they'll be doing, they'll be providing better crash data for us. And then I'm hoping that we can come, I can come to the town council in the future for potential funding to rehire BSC Group. The town manager asked that I come to you and give you this debrief, because although we weren't awarded, it is a show that we are out there fighting for the town, for these discretionary funds. I note in my prior slide that, if I didn't note, I intended on it, we are, we were among the few towns and cities in that fiscal year '22 application that even went for the RAISE grant. So we were aggressive from the start by getting out there and trying to apply, and then in the second year, we only improved our score. So I'm hoping that this will be our, the third time's charm here. And then with regards to an overall grants update, so this is a pie chart that represents our current grant activity, which is about $12 million right now. That's just, that's sort of touching my office or, you know, with which I'm involved. I've broken it out by four categories of benefits. So you can see there, public safety is around 28%, recreation, 36%, roads, 26%, townwide 10%. And if I could just highlight maybe a couple of those that are represented in those percentages. Public safety, for instance, would be things like those capital grants that we received from the USDA to offset the cost for ambulance, two police cruisers, two DPW trucks. The 36% recreation would represent things like the rail trail, the EDA grant for $4.1 million, and it's the match that's coming from Mass DOT for that. Mass trails, the two park grants, one for McCann, one for 76 Central's Pocket Park. The 26% for roads would be our two Mass Works grants, and the 10% townwide would be things like what's coming to you tonight for the urban forestry grant, the municipal fiber assessment, the community compact practice, that would be considered a townwide benefit. Things like the community compact for fiber, municipal fiber, that would have been more of a public safety. The curbside collection would have been the one that fell under the townwide. So hopefully this is a fair representation, keeping in mind that I heard loud and clear from Councillor Marquetti, are we going for roads? Why aren't we going for roads? So just to remind the town, there have been more, there's been more opportunity for traditional grants such as the park grant or the CDBG funds and the traditional grants we've been going for over the last few years. Only recent have there been these new roads grants that we, again, have aggressively gone for, unlike some other, many other cities and towns, we're going for more so than others. And so we're doing our best where there are roads grants opportunities available. And then specifically, I just, I mean, this is a lot for one slide, but more for me, the right side is a, it lists out the grants that represent the $12 million, except it leaves out the CDBG, because I feel like you already know much about the CDBG. And I won't, I won't list them now, but then I just, I called out inside the pie chart some of the biggest grants we have. So like I'd mentioned, under recreation, you've got that rail trail, $4.1 million, that's the EDA and the Mass Act. Under the road projects, we anticipate being awarded a River Crane $2 million grant that we can hopefully look forward to. Under the Mass Works from prior years, we have the East Main Street project, and then we have the, you know, public safety, the fire station earmark, for instance. So those are our largest that stick out. And this does not include almost a million dollars of grant activity that's already been closed out. I just want to thank everybody in town, the town councillors, you know, this is not, although this comes out of our department, you know, these ideas are generated in casual conversations, they're generated in department meetings, in department conversations, and then the applications are a team effort, and of course, the execution takes everyone. So, you know, this is all hands on deck. So to all those involved, thank you, and the work is making a difference. So thank you.
I'd just like to take a minute to thank you for all your hard work. Are there any questions from any councils? Councillor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. It was hard to see some of that last slide, so I, if I'm asking a question about something that was up there, I apologize. The status of the Mass Works grant, I thought, I think we talked about it last spring. We were talking about possibly using it on sidewalks for businesses around town. I don't, I don't know what happened with that one.
Sure. So just quick update. So I had said I would bring it to what is called an expression of interest. The expression of interest is sort of like a pre-vetting before you submit your application in June, so I came back to you in April, May, and said that this was not a winning application and suggested River Crane as an alternative, and so we're hoping to be awarded.
Okay, thank you. I thought River Crane was a different project, but I'll accept that. The speed feedback school, zone speed signs, whatever happened with that one?
So those are the Charlton Street speeds, speed signs?
Right.
Yeah, their delivery is behind schedule, unfortunately, but the last we had checked in, we're all ready to go. We're just waiting for them to deliver.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Ms. Dean, I appreciate all the hard work you've done over the past few years, being in the position you are in, and obviously those that work directly with you on these projects. I mentioned the other night at the DPW meeting about the shared streets and the complete streets, when just 2019, I believe it was, where we had higher-ups who decided it was not a good idea to use them, it was too much work to do, the planning process was too tedious, and here we are today, receiving funds for complete streets, shared streets, because of your push-through. So I thank you personally for doing that. It helps our roads, that's infrastructure work, road work, expanding of our infrastructure itself, sidewalks, everything that's included in it, because it was too hard. So thank you for not taking that advice and moving forward with your process. Thank you.
Are there any questions, Councillor Rivas?
Thank you for all of this work. And I just had a question about, in the prior years for the RAISE grant, did, did we have anyone reach out to our state delegation or federal delegation?
If I may, through you, Chair, we did. We received letters of support both years. Last year, it wasn't indicated whether or not Senator Warren submitted on our behalf. It was said if that they, if they were submitting a letter of support, they would send it direct. And so I was, it was sort of left in the balance whether or not. And so we'll just have to work harder to make sure we can get those confirmations. And now working with CMRPC, they've said they're also happy to send on our behalf if that helps to get our legislators' support. One of the things I try not to do is just provide one canned letter for everyone to sign. I try to steer it individually towards them and their interests and us, so that it really seems like, you know, it's, it's a genuine push from them and not just some rubber stamp.
Come, Pec, Chenier.
Yes, Ms. Dean, I want to thank you for what you have done and the amount of money that's brought in by your department. Last week you had a hearing, I believe, with the town manager regarding some extra or leftover money. Can you give us an update of that, of that hearing on what the plan is going to be?
Sure. So if I may, through you, Chair, does this seem appropriate? Okay, so CDBG funding, we get $825,000 a year. This year, it's actually, it's a double year, so we're going to get 1.65. But in the previous years, we were funding code enforcement, health inspections, building inspections. We have not been able to fill those positions. The money is left on the table. We had promised the town council, if there's money left on the table, we would move it into other programming to make sure that no money goes unspent. And the projects that were suggested through an excellent job of public engagement by Katie was either Main Street, the 600-block playground that had burned, to replace that, to update the Heritage Trail for ADA accessibility, or to do a mural project at the Capillo Park Skate Park on the actual skate park concrete. And the resounding winner was Main Street. Had we not done Main Street, we could have done a couple of projects, but if we put all our eggs in this basket, we'll be able to afford to replace the playground. So it seems like that's the winner, and I think it's going to go forward next year, next spring, hopefully.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just Town Manager.
Yeah, through you. Just in regards to the council with that RAISE grant, hopefully you will support that project, because Ms. Dean really touched basic information. When we say that project went through the process, it was one of nine projects that was brought into the Secretary of Transportation for the United States with a recommendation for funding. So our project made it to the Secretary of Transportation of the United States with a recommendation for funding, and they only funded three of those projects. And as the gentleman that debriefed us was, some of those projects have been there a couple of years as well. So he highly encouraged us to take this Hamilton Street project and resubmit it with additional support and gave us a lot of good guidance of what he would like to see, and he was a very high-up individual in that department. So the brief wasn't from just a low-level staff member, it was high up in the federal government to provide us the feedback to make our application strong. And when we talk about Hamilton Street, I think any of us that have driven down Hamilton Street knows that that street is in dire need of some major repairs, and the RAISE grant is able to be used there because of the type of grant that we're applying for, because of the targeted area. So when we bring this forward, I hope that everybody's engaged in it, will support it, because it will be, when we think about it, we will be doing the tip project, this would follow right with the tip project to do that complete main, to main, actually, one end to main to the other end when you come up. So thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager. Any other discussion by any of the councils? If not, thank you very much, Peg. Moving on to Citizens Forum, are there any citizens that would like to come in front of the council and speak to any issues that are not on the agenda? State your name and address.
Hi, I'm Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill Road in Southbridge, and I'm talking about hunting. In Agenda number 15, it was about deer hunting in Southbridge, but this is different. So I will respect, if you want me to wait until the fifth, number 15.
If you could wait till, wait till the agenda item, we can speak to it at that time.
Okay, but this is not about Southbridge deer hunting. This is about the state.
Go ahead.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to let you all know that hunting has started. Rabbit started October 14th. Turkey hunting is going on October 2nd to November 25th. I guess they get Thanksgiving off. And deer hunting is starting, that's kind of like the big one, November 27th to December 9th. And most upland game birds are October 14th to December 30th. Trapping beaver is January 15th to April 20, April 15th. That already happened. And now November 1st, 2023, till April 15th, 2024. And other fur bearers are November 1st to November 30th. And you can visit www.mass.gov/masswildlife, or their Facebook page, or call them 508-389-6300 for bag license, hunting license information, more information, other animals. Now, I'm a vegetarian, so you may be thinking, why does she care? But we all need to respect each other. So if you're in the woods, wear your hunter orange, like me, and be respectful of other hunters, and it may even save your own hide. Oh, I wanted to mention, there was a picture on Everything Southbridge today, too, of somebody dressed up in orange. So enjoy our beautiful woods and wetlands this fall and do it safely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Chenier.
Just, I guess to contradict Ms. Doyle a little bit, hunting season started in Massachusetts for youth deer hunting season was September 30th. Paraplegic hunting season is from November 2nd to the 4th. Archery season for Zone 10 to 14 is October 2nd to November 25th. And then for Zone 1 and 9, it's from October 16th to November 25th. Shotgun season is from November 27th to December 9th. And primitive firearm season is from December 11th to December 30th.
Thank you. If there are no other citizens that would like to address the council, we'll move on to agenda item number nine, vote to confirm town manager's appointment of move on to Agenda Item Number 9. Vote to confirm Town Manager's appointment of Benjamin Doros to Maintenance Man, Heavy Equipment Operator, effective immediately. State Ethics in Good Standing. Do I motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Adams. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a 4-0 vote in favor of Mr. Doros, and highly recommended by everybody that came up and talked about him that evening. Glad to see the, some of the young ones that have just been hired on stepping up to the plate and moving forward as the DPW moves forward and their progress. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present? Moving on to 10. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Jeffrey Tebow to Maintenance Man, Equipment Operator, effective immediately, pending successful completion of State Ethics.
So moved.
Motion by Shinya?
Second.
Seconded by Daniels. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Mr. Tebow was highly recommended, 4-0 in favor of, and glad to see another Marine stepping up to the plate in our town. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present?
He's here, if you want to introduce himself.
If you'd like to make a speech, come on up. Mr. Doros wasn't as gutsy.
Thank you, Tebow, Woodstock Valley, Connecticut.
Welcome.
Not much of a speech maker, but I thank you for the opportunity and help out any way I can.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Mr. Adams?
Sir?
Semper Fi.
Arrah. Not most. Happy birthday.
Boy, another guy, product of the Navy.
Department, bud.
Moving on. Vote to approve the Town Manager's Job Description Classification for Interim Executive Operations Officer MS-16 for the DPW. Do I motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Daniels?
Ortiz.
Oh, by Ortiz. I knew it was on the end. Heard the voice on the end. This goes to General Gov?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This item and the next were kind of, in a way, round about both heard, general government and DPW. So I wouldn't be surprised if Counselor Adams has something, but it was recommended and general government subcommittee.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's 4-0 in favor of.
Any further discussion? Counselor, I mean, Counselor Montaggy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. My only question is, why would we be adding an interim position to the schedule? I know that we hired an interim assessor, but we didn't add that to the schedule. So I was just curious why we're adding this. It's an interim position through you to the Town Manager.
I thought it was discussed. Had subcommittee, but Mr. Town Manager, if you'd like to...
I'll answer it.
Thank you.
First off, just for the public and any council that wasn't there, this is a, right now, an interim Executive Operations Officer. As you're aware, we have been unable to fill the position of Deputy DPW Director. We had somebody online. There's no doubt that the Department of Public Works needs a strong assistant. In addition to the general assistant that, or the executive secretary that works for him, which has a whole host of other duties, he really needs somebody to step in and be able to work with him for bids and the daily reports of MS-4 and all the federal regulations. So this was an interim position for right now to assist the Town Manager while we look at the whole Department of Public Works operation, evaluate positions, and how best we're going to move forward in the next decade and further as we operate under that. In regards to the classification on the schedule, there was no title within that schedule that said Executive Operations Assistant. So therefore, we had to work it into the salary schedule to make sure that we're able to pay the individual at a rate of pay that would be commensurate with that job description. So that's why that is added into that classification, so that we can slot them in into Human Resources. This is what your pay scale is. This is what your steps are. So that's the reason why we did that.
Okay, thank you. I thought that someone, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought someone asked if there was going to be a time limit on this position?
I think I said that we were going to look at, at least through this fiscal year, and evaluate what the job descriptions are within the DPW in relation to what do we want to see as far as either a Deputy DPW Director, or just an engineer, or how we can work with Rich to make this department function in the future with the personnel as efficiently as possible.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present? Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12. Vote to approve an amendment to Schedule 1, Town of Southbridge Classification Compensation Plan, effective July 1, 2023. Addition of the interim Executive Operations Officer MS-16 for the DPW. Pray motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinya. Counselor Montaggy?
Thank you. I think this one just went to Gen Gov alone, and it was recommended for approval.
Counselor Adams?
Though we just, thank you, Mr. Chair, just, I do believe Counselor Montaggy is correct on the Schedule 1. It was only General Gov.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present? Number 13. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Hannah Prescott to Interim Executive Operations Officer, effective immediately. State Ethics in Good Standing. Do I motion?
So moved.
Motion by Shinya?
Second.
Seconded by Adams. DPW, Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. It's 4-0 in favor of Hannah coming back to this town and then working for it. And Mr. Benoit said quite a few kind words up there about her and the discussions they've had. And I look forward to seeing her back here in Town of Southbridge working. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Just town manager?
Thank you, through you. It was a pleasure to recommend this appointment with the, or to recommend this appointment upon consultation with the Department of Public Works, Richard Benoit, when we discussed how we could go forward to assist the Department of Public Works in the near future and then long term. And when we kind of had to think outside the box about what we were looking for in this position and what kind of talent we want to bring back or bring to town for this position, we look at individuals that have worked here in the past or in other networking that you do within the field. And we all look for colleagues that may be able to step up at any given time to work with us. And having worked with Hannah in my capacity as the Chairman of the Fire Station Building Committee, and her knowledge of how she worked with me to facilitate the bids, and then her work in the town with the budget process, her ability to learn munis, the ability to work in that capacity, the fact that she went out and got her certified procurement training courses done. To me, this individual was the right fit at the right time to help us move this department forward. So I strongly recommend her, and I'm grateful that she wants to come back and continue with the town. And perhaps, if it works out there, it's either there or somewhere else in the Town Hall, because it is a very great individual that we're bringing back to our fold. Thank you.
Any other discussion by council?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as we all know, DPW's been in turmoil for the last well over a year. Prior to coming on council, I attended many meetings of the DPW Subcommittee and council, and every meeting was about problems at the DPW. We started to fix those problems when we brought in Mr. Benoit as the DPW Director. And I think bringing in Ms. Prescott is going to be another fix for that problem. Even though it's just an interim Executive Operations position, I think the professionalism that Ms. Prescott has shown in the Town Manager's office will reflect what she does in the DPW Director. And I look forward to working with her and Mr. Benoit and bringing some good leadership to the DPW department. And again, I'll fully support her tonight.
Any further discussion? Just as a point of information to councilors, this is a small step in an area that needs some reconfiguration and work. We'll be working on it in the future. But this is a small first step forward for the operations. All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present?
I raised my hand. I opposed.
One opposed. One opposed, Counselor Montaggy. Motion passes. Hannah, would you like to come up?
Thank you. I was very excited to hear about the opportunity to return, and I've stayed in touch with the team, Nor, Jack, Rich, and many others. So I'm very excited to rejoin the team. Thank you all for the compliments. And we're going to make things work real smooth in DPW. Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number 14. Vote to approve an amendment to Schedule 5, Town of Southbridge Classification Compensation Plan, effective July 1, 2022. Change salary of seal, sealer and weights and measures to $8,000 and add the language for gasoline as noted in the FY '24 budget adoption. Do I motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion, General Gov?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This was recommended at Subcommittee. I believe it's just a clerical cleanup of last year. Manager will add to that, I'm sure. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Further discussion, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present? Moving on to 15. Vote to allow deer hunting in the town watershed land, starting October 16, 2023, and ending on December 31, 2023. Subject to all hunting on town lands must comply with all Massachusetts hunting laws.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Montaggy, seconded by Shinya. Just town manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. When we put together the DPW Subcommittee agendas, we had issued it, and then there was an email that had come from Steve Gregwire from the Whitewater. We got in two items, the next, these two items, 15 and 16. We weren't able to get on any of them. So I thank the chairman for allowing us to put these forward this evening directly to council. He did forward a memo. So what this is, is we had allowed hunting in the watershed area previously. And his memo is, "The previous forest that had continued, continued to encourage Southbridge to allow open hunting of the watershed lands until we see signs of declining population of deer in the area." This summer, we hosted the MassDRC on-site, as well as our previous forester. When traversing the forest, we continue to see lack of new tree regrowth, as well as sign and scrape marks indicating a strong deer population. Also, the staff has placed trail cameras throughout the property, and we have continued to see large volumes of deer travel on the cart roads. So they asked the council to support the deer hunting for the 2023 deer hunting season. And in fact, Steve did show me several cameras that had many deer in it, as well as a bear that was licking the trail camera at some point. So I recommend following the recommendation of Steve Gregwire.
Any discussion? Counselor Montaggy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I understand the reason for this, and I will support it. I just want to say, there was really no paperwork on this attached to the agenda. I understand the need for it. Thinning out the herd is a good idea. Keeps them away from the water, our water source. I think last year, though, there were questions about how exactly this would work. Do they have to apply to the town to go on the property and hunt? Do the deer get tagged when they come out? Those are, it's been a while, but I think those are some of the questions from last year. But I intend to support it because I remember last year, it was very important to clean up the reservoir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just town manager?
This is a, I should have mentioned, Steve would normally have been here to explain these two items. However, he's taking college courses and he's in a degree program, so he's unable to make it because he has class this evening. So I can certainly ask him how that process will be developed and have him, I'll send out the email tomorrow and ask him to just clarify how they're going to go about selecting the hunters, if there's any changes in the previous hunting season. But hunting season as articulated has already started, so that's why we need to, can't postpone it for right now.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present? Moving on to 16. Vote to, vote Hannah into a nine-year agreement with Fieldstone Natural Resources LLC for the forestry services and timber harvesting administration, and for the Town Manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, motion by Montaggy, seconded by Daniels. Discussion?
I just have a quick question. Again, why, why is forestry so important up there? And will this be enough to turn a profit for the town selling the timber? Thank you.
Certainly, I think it's twofold. One, profit is always a good thing to have. But secondly, it is protection of the watershed area. So some of the forestry that he is looking at doing, Rich showed me the map around the reservoir, I'm not sure which reservoir it was, five maybe, where he's looking to take the tree growth that's next to the, to the water and take that back so that it allows for some buffer. And then secondly, to thin out some of the trees to allow new regrowth underneath. So it's a program that they are doing. The original forester, unfortunately, that he had, had passed away, and worked with DCR to see how we could continue the program. And this is the individual that we're going to select would just continue on that contract. And if Rich has any other additional information.
Rich?
Just to add to that, so the plan that is in place through the...
Rich, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
So from what I was explained, we had hired a forester to develop a forestry plan in order to better protect our, not just the reservoirs, but also the forest lands that we have. So the, the underbrush, the invasive species of plants, and so on and so forth, that we are trying to keep out of our watershed area. The forestation process is very important to help prevent any infestation of things that we don't want. We're also looking into ideas on how to better protect the forest lands. We're currently looking into doing controlled burns on areas that we have already forested. I believe we're looking at doing a selective cut of up to 100 acres per year from here on out, just to better serve what the original purpose was for the forest. So this essentially is going to better protect our water supply from things that we don't want, and such as acidity from leaves, pine needles, and so on and so forth. As far as the profit margins go, from what I got from Steve in conversation about this, his plan for hiring a new forester was to find somebody much like what we had, which is, the gentleman we had was not in it for the money as far as selling for specific items. A lot of foresters, you'll get sale, they'll look for sale and what they want to harvest based on what the market is for telephone poles, or so on and so forth. Our program is more along the lines of protecting our assets, but there will also be a return.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know when Steve brought this up, I believe it was last year or the year before, for the original contract, it was to protect the watershed, A, that was the number one priority. And B, there was a price list, I believe it was, on that original contract. I'm assuming that's the same that we have right now. Wasn't making, you know, the town big money, but the whole thing was to protect our resources that we have right now because they were encroaching on our, on the reserves themselves. Thank you.
Counselor Shinya, then.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do recall that Mr. Gregwire came to council, and it was during a period of time when he suggested that the money being generated from the tree cutting would be put into revolving fund, so he wouldn't have to come to council every time that we had an issue. had an issue with the forestry. He spoke in depth about the invasive growth that was happening around the reservoirs, and I think Ms. Doyle got up and spoke about the particular invasive species of trees that was affecting, especially Cohasi. It was also during that time that he, I thought, it wasn't a matter of turning a profit, it was, it was a matter of protecting the watershed and giving us the quality of water that we all enjoy now. And if you recall during that period of time, he also spoke about, in the future, coming forward with a possibility of dredging the reservoirs because of the amount of sediment that has come over the years through leaves and brush and those kind of things. And I think he spoke about the possibility of dredging up to eight feet in depth. So this is something that's been discussed fully, I believe, in the last year or so. Thank you.
Stellman, Angela?
Yeah, through you. Evidently, Mr. Gregwire is watching while he's in class, just sent me a message that we made twenty-seven thousand on the last harvest, based on fifty acres that were harvested. So we made a profit of twenty-seven thousand.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Thank you, Rich. Moving on to seventeen. Vote to authorize a contract with tie-in bond for FY two thousand twenty-four, stormwater engineering services in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinya. Discussion? DPW?
Four to zero in favor of going into this contract. Thank you.
Council Mike Eddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've always had a problem with tie-in bond, and this goes back to the landfill days. I'm not trying to drag up the landfill again. Believe me, I'm gone beyond the landfill. But their denial up there at the landfill costs this town a lot of money. They kept denying the source of contamination. Now, more recently, they are constantly doing change orders, change orders at the water department, at the South Street, on our small bridges. Haven't even started them yet, they were already doing change orders at the fire station on West Street. The West Street, the last change order from tie-in bond was on July. West Street to be done by September fifteenth. Final payment, October fifteenth. They're still working on West Street. So I don't know if tie-in bond, I really don't know. Are they inept? Are they just not fulfilling their service contract? I really don't know, but I just can't support hiring them. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Council Rivas?
Not so much a question, but maybe, I'd love to see, I know tie-in bond has come up a few times, but in thinking about earlier comments from the town manager about reassessment of the department, and thinking about how much we've spent on all these small services, and sort of what would be the cost comparison to having an engineer again in this department, as opposed to what we've spent in all of these increments over time. I'd love to see sort of like a comparison when you evaluate the, the structure of your department. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Council Mike Eddy, one opposed. Moving on to number eighteen. Vote to enter into an agreement with Energy Conservation, ECI, National Grid, for two Level Two charging stations with four charges total to be installed at the Registry of Motor Vehicles by January two thousand twenty-four, for forty-nine thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents, of which seven thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents will be paid by the Town of Southbridge using Town Council Reserve Funds Account zero zero one, one three two, dash, five seven eight, one zero zero, and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Daniels, seconded by Shinya. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a robust discussion. Approval was four to zero in favor of pushing it up to the town council. We had, when I talk about robust discussion, it was a robust discussion of over a year ago, two years ago, somewhere around there, when we had this glorious idea of having all these charging stations throughout the town, and even got into a point where the town hall's charging station was brought up. Obviously, that's for another day and another discussion, but the fact is, Ms. Dean had brought this forward based on the town council's recommendation of a couple of charging stations through the process, that Mr. Rumsey, the former town planner, had put forward and discussed with us, and which the town council prior, town council approved, and we actually get to, and also the discussion who's paying for what. Obviously, we, we don't want to come straight out of local taxpayer money. It would be some type of, just like debit card, credit card, app, whatever it may be, that would, they would have to pay for it through there. That was something that was promised, and we're looking at through the contracts when they go out. So it was a good discussion, but all in all, the, the subcommittee was in favor of it, and pushing this thing forward, and finally make us up to happen. Thank you.
Any discussion? Council Mike Eddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The vehicle charging stations across the town, it's going to cost, what, forty-nine thousand six sixty-eight? Seven thousand two hundred and forty-eight to the local taxpayers after rebate. Now, I agree, electric cars are the future, but I just think this needs more planning. I have just too many questions of who's going to be doing the billing, ChargePoint or the town? Will there be revenue sharing? Will be using ChargePoint software? Are we going to be charged for that usage? Will we be charging by the kilowatt? The hours, energy costs, parking, all of the above? These are commercial Level Two chargers. I did look into the chargers on their website. How long does it take to charge? Seven point two kilowatts. Is it going to take four hours, eight hours? Most people charge their vehicles at night when electricity costs are lower, so are they going to move their car in the middle of the night, or are they just going to leave their car all night long? And I also had a few questions from constituents. Why, why is the town getting into the car charging business? Town didn't get into gas pumping business, why are we getting into car charging business? I went on the, the website, it says, "One of the main advantages of commercial EV charging stations is that they can generate revenue for businesses that install them." And I also say that, you see that the TIP project is going to be happening, we're going to completely take up that whole area, remove the charging stations, put them back on, put them back in, so I don't really see this as a necessity at this time, so I think we should wait till after the TIP project. And I don't really agree that taxpayers should have to pay for these charging stations. I certainly can't afford an electric car. I don't know a lot of people who can. So I would make a motion to refer this back to subcommittee for further discussion. I'm not opposed to electric cars in the future, the charging stations, but I just think there are too many questions that I have at this time.
Is a motion to refer to subcommittee, is there a second? There is no second?
All right.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Council Rivas?
I just had a quick question, and I apologize, I didn't have a chance to watch that particular meeting. How does this tie in, again, with the projects that are happening in that area, but also with the future of the registry? I know that we took a vote not too long ago, but-
Could I ask Peg Dean to come forward?
Hi.
She did the presentation.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. So back in two thousand twenty-one, three, five, twenty-one, the council made a motion to approve, the town planner applied for the EV IP grant, which was a state incentive to be able to put in chargers at the town hall, the fire station, Crystal Street, and the library. Main Street took away the, the parking at the library, so there was further discussion about maybe doing it in the parking lot. Crystal Street was a good potential. The fire station, they need more power, and the town hall, I don't know what the issue is. At this time, it's, there's no evidence that we ever applied for the EV IP, and so there is this opportunity through the paperwork you received to just go ahead with what's a national grid incentive. And so the state and national grid are pushing hard for the, you know, infrastructure to be built for electric cars. One of the tools they have is to incentivize the, the public land and private properties to be able to put them in on their, at their locations. For a Level Two charger, it takes about eight hours to charge for, and then who will own it? If we sell the RMV, or we, you know, we sold, say we wanted to sell that property. Verifying with Chris Collins, ECI, today, what would happen is, we would just make sure that when we sell, we're selling with the chargers included as part of the deed. That's all. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Stellman, Angela?
Yeah, through you. In regards to the fact that the town will be getting into electric chargers, we will be, because it is a requirement of our fire station building project to put in five chargers at that location, through building code. But those will be also like these, where we will charge for the electricity. So we are being required to put that in as part of our fire station project, just as a point of information.
If I could add a little bit to that point of information, the code has changed even on single residential homes. All new homes have outside chargers. It's headed in that direction. Council Adams, you had your hand in-
Just real quick, Mr. Chair, we also talked about bringing this, this seven thousand dollars to the ARPA committee to pay for it through, through the ARPA committee. I know it's taxpayer money, but the fact is, we have, that's for infrastructure work itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Council Mike Eddy? Opposed. Moving on to agenda item number nineteen. Vote to approve the application for shared streets and spaces grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund the pedestrian and safety improvements within the East Main Street project, scope not already funded by the Mass Works, and to authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Ortiz?
Second.
Seconded by Daniels. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This went through DPW, four to zero in favor of moving forward with this. This is exactly what the town council had been asking for, for some time. This will help pay for that itself over there on the south side of the river, I should say, the south side of Main, East Main Street, for going from the rail trail over towards the Rotary area, but, what's that? Am I wrong on that one? Not this one. Oh, I thought this one was it. No. This one goes from K Street to Northwood Zuck Road. Oh, sorry, the opposite way. Thank you very much. Opposite way, but this is exactly what we were asking for in the first place as a town council, and P and D heard it, and Planning Development heard it, and moving forward with it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to twenty. Vote to accept the award of the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Planning Assistance Grant to support the creation of the Southbridge Housing Production Plan for twenty thousand dollars, and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is a motion by Daniels, seconded by Adams. Council Daniels?
This was voted two to one to move forward to the council.
Stellman, Angela?
Yeah, thank you, through you, and if Peg needs to answer any questions, she's short. Couple of these items were brought forward by Katie Yoder in the CDBG office. Unfortunately, she had an incident that occurred at her home, and we wish her the luck.
She's given permission for us to state publicly?
Okay.
Yeah.
Her apartment house caught on fire over the weekend, so she's been dealing with relocation and all that. She was here at work today, but she had to continue to work through that. So we wish her the best of luck, and anything she needs from us, we've offered to help her and assist her in any way possible. So this grant for twenty thousand dollars was to create a housing inventory for Chapter Forty-B. As you're aware, we're below the percentage threshold for Forty-B housing. Due to that fact, we are not able to put any special requirements on Forty-B housing. So if somebody wanted to just come in, i.e., in the Franklin Realty area, if they want to strictly go Forty-B and not work with the town, they could certainly go through that process. So this would allow us to do an inventory to verify and document what housing we have at Forty-B, to make sure that our threshold will be reached. And I strongly encourage us to do this, to make sure we have an accurate count on this.
Any further discussion? Council Mike Eddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This is a twenty thousand dollar grant. Fifteen thousand of it will come from the state, five thousand of it will come from the local taxpayers. A housing production plan to address our housing needs. The way, the way I thought I heard it was that this is a, a plan to restrict affordable housing. That's what was said at the subcommittee level. So if councils are thinking that this will be used to create more affordable housing, I don't believe that that's the case. Now, we were, we did receive the Auburn Plan, was submitted to the council. Not quite sure why, because it was said at the meeting that the Auburn Plan, they would not be using it. Auburn formed, formed a housing committee. Council Chair said, "We don't need another committee," and I agree. I agree with that. We don't need another committee. Council Chair has also previously said, "We don't need another study that sits on a shelf collecting dust," and I agree with that statement as well. So I look at this as just another study to throw some funds someone's way, will not solve our housing problems. Do we have a housing problem? I don't know. We have a lot of homeless camps in, in town. I see a lot of kids living at home because they can't afford rent. So I don't consider this a serious study to address any housing problems that we have in town, and I won't be voting for it. Thank you.
Could I, could I make a comment?
Any further discussion, Council? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Peg Dean.
If I may, through you, Chair, I, I would just like to point out, had we had this housing production plan in place, when the Wells School went online, we would have had a point five percent increase in our affordable housing, along with our housing production plan, which would have stopped the ability for anyone thereafter from doing a Forty-B in the next year. And so it is a tool to be able to prevent Forty-B housing projects with, within, you know, housing projects that can go anywhere in town without the planning board's say. So that's where it's a very helpful tool.
Council Shinya?
Yes, Ms. Dean, I believe you did speak about this and the importance of having approved this grant, and you explained that was the fifteen thousand dollars was the grant, and the town's in-service was going to be around five thousand dollars with labor costs and those kind of things. But what I got through this, was the most important thing was, it was going to assist the town in preventing possibly projects being bypassed at the planning board level when either we, as councils, don't approve the project, or the planning board denies the project, and the developer of the property can bypass the planning board and go to the state for the Forty-B project. At this committee, and the research that is being done by this committee, would assist the community in finding out where we stand with the percentage of housing under the Forty-B or affordable housing. Am I correct? I understood that as you explained it last week.
If I may, through you, Chair, just a few quick points. So it's a fifteen thousand dollar award, it's twenty-six hundred dollars in in-kind, or vice versa, twenty-six hundred dollars in council reserves, twenty-four hundred in in-kind services. We already know our percentage is six point zero eight percent. We, the, the goal of the plan is to do an assessment of our current housing stock, what our needs are, what our goals should be, and look at some tools, such as, how do we assess the impact of these development projects on the town? You know, what is the incentive for a property owner to potentially deed their property as affordable housing if they're already renting at that rate? Those kinds of questions.
And if I may continue, Mr. Chairman, it's not to, it's not to prevent Forty-B projects from happening, because as we all know, people deserve to live in quality and affordable housing, but it's to be able to assist the town to make sure that we follow in that Forty-B pocket of information, and being able to use that information when the projects move forward through the planning board. It's to eliminate the state coming in and saying, "You're going to do this." This is going to assist the town in saying, "The town, you're going to do this," not the state. Am I correct?
I can recall Melissa Zawodski asking our department, "Do you know your percentage of affordable housing? Do you know what Forty-R is? Do, do you know?" This department should have had a hold on all of that information. Chapter Forty, affordable housing, is, is not necessarily Forty-B. Forty-B is a tool that the state uses to allow a developer to come in and supersede our land use zoning and build wherever they want. They can, they don't have to go to the planning board, they can go to any parcel, they can build as long as they go to the ZBA and get what's called a comprehensive permit. They can be conditioned through the ZBA, but again, they do not have to go through the land use zoning. That is a big deal. You have other affordable housing- You have other affordable housing, uh, ways to develop affordable housing. We're not discouraging developers. What we want to see is that they go through our planning board, our land use processes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Rivas.
Um, so this video I did watch. But I, just along the same lines as Counselor Shinia, uh, so will this help us sort of direct affordable housing into sort of getting a sense of where it might be most needed in our community and sort of having a plan where, um, you know, in sort of a measured way, we figure out, okay, this is, this area has a, a larger need? Is that sort of something that this plan and the assessment will help us determine?
Theoretically, yes. Thank you. Good question. And the reason Auburn was included was because it was an example. It was not meant to be our, um, our guidepost. It was just, and, um, it could be similar, but it doesn't have to be all the elements of, and so with the, the council chair's point, we don't have to have a, another committee.
I have one more. One more question. Um, and I, I do agree, we do have a lot of committees. Um, but just thinking about the community input, is there an idea of how that process would, I mean, this is a very, um, this is a topic that a lot of people in our community are very passionate about. Uh, so I was curious, how do we have a plan as to what that community input would look like?
Yes. If I may, through you, Chair, just quickly, part, one very important element of the grant is the public engagement piece where they're out there getting feedback from the community on the town's behalf, similar to what we do for, you know, the urban renewal plan, the master plan, the open space plan. Um, and, uh, and, and I pride myself in having taken a, a stronghold on the plans we have and trying to move those projects forward that are within the plans. Thank you.
Any further discussion by any of the councils? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Moving on to 21, vote to allocate $2,600 to the town council reserve funds account 001132-578100 as matching funds for planning and assistance grant.
So moved.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinia. PND? Counselor Daniels?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The council, the committee voted 3-0 to move this forward.
Any discussion by any councils? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?
Opposed.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Moving on to 22, vote to accept the Community Development Block Grant Mini Entitlement, FY 2223, CDPG grant award for $1,650,000 to fund housing and commercial rehabilitation programs, open space and recreation planning, code enforcement position, and administrative expenses, and authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. PND, Count, uh, Chairman, uh, Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Committee voted 3-0 to move this forward.
My commendation favorable from subcommittee. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 23, vote to accept the Urban and Community Forestry Grant for $1 million and authorize the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, council very strongly voted 3-0 to move this one forward, committee.
Before we vote on this, can I ask Steve Brady, one of the citizens of Southbridge? He's a gentleman that's always under the radar, always doing good things for the town of Southbridge, and I'd like to thank you, and if you could, uh, talk on this issue, please.
Sure. Um, my name's Steve Brady. I'm from 27 Country Club Place, and it's, uh, it's an honor to be here in front of you all, and it's a real honor to talk about this grant. It's, it's an amazing grant, and it was a nationally competitive grant, and many, many communities applied for it in the state of Massachusetts, and we are one of nine to actually get it. So we should be very proud, and it's a good thing. So the purpose of the grant is to actually set up a community forestry program within the town of Southbridge. It's a million dollar grant, and the very first thing we're going to do is create a community forestry commission or a shade tree commission. Many towns have them. We do not. And once that's done, we will hire a contract urban forester and an assistant to create an urban forestry or community forestry plan and program. What can happen at the same time that that's occurring is to implement a right-of-way study to identify all right-of-ways in the town because we have to know what the community forest is. We need to know where municipal, all municipal property is along streets so that we can identify the trees that are within those boundaries. Then we'll research a proper street park tree inventory system, provide community volunteers with training to actually perform that inventory. So that means we'll be working with schools, getting high school kids involved or, and anyone else who's interested in learning a little bit about, uh, trees, and we will do, um, an inventory. Once the inventory is done, we will provide, well, at the same time, we could provide tree care education to town municipal staff, such as DPW, so that they're better prepared to do proper pruning cuts, fertilization, and even removals if they can. Then we will use the inventory to actually create a community arboretum. Uh, we will also create a municipal tree pruning program, uh, create an integrated pest management and fertilization program for all municipal trees, and create a tree planting program as well as a removal program. The ultimate goal will be to attain a National Arbor Day Tree City designation and also to attain a Society Municipal Arbors accreditation. That will be the goals of this grant.
Any questions of Steve? Counselor McEddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Uh, it's nice to see the council is embracing the Green New Deal. Uh, when you read the documentation for this, this grant will create green jobs and green careers. So together with the electric car charging stations, I think AOC would be very proud of this town council. Thank you. Now, the forestry grant used to plant and maintain trees downtown. Uh, I'm not sure what we'll do with the work planting, pruning, and fertilizing. It's also to create an arboretum downtown. I've been to arboretums, the very large areas of land that usually contain diverse plantings. I don't really know where downtown we could create, we, that we have a large area like that. Also to create a shade tree commission. I'm not sure we need another committee, as was said previously. But having said all that, I would not vote against this. $1 million is nothing to sneeze at, uh, but I would like to see a, a stronger effort to get funding for roads, sidewalks, and fire stations. I, I get it that we are trying to get them, but I would just like to see more of an effort specifically for those items, but that's all. Thank you.
Okay. If I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Ray.
One of the things I do volunteer and now work with the Opaken Land Trust, and we have been expanding the variety of trees in the downtown. Uh, I don't know if people have noticed, but along Main Street, there are many new trees planted, along, uh, Commercial Drive, and we're looking to do, uh, Oak Ridge Cemetery and as well as Dresser Street and Marcy Street. We have many, many different varieties of trees, and all these are educational opportunities for people who are interested or want to know a little bit more about trees. Having an arboretum, there would be brochures that you can just pick up or go online and see the map where each individual tree is. Each tree will be tagged with a QR code as well as an identifying, uh, mark for that tree. So that's just a little bit of a thing about the arboretum.
Thank you. Any other discussion by any councils?
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Shinia.
Contrary to what, to some councils say, uh, the new green deal is going to happen, whether we support this tonight or not. Climate change is happening, and whether you believe it or not, electric charges in cars are coming, whether you believe it or not. Uh, this is being mandated by Congress, our state legislators, our governor, and even us. I want to thank you for applying for this grant. It's not a grant just to plant trees. It's a grant to see what we are all about, and I thank you very much for doing that, and I look forward to the new green deal. Thank you.
Okay. I just, uh, any other comments? I'd just like to say, a gentleman gave me some postcards of Southbridge way back in the day. You could not believe how many trees were on the sides of the streets in Southbridge, and I look at that, and then I think of you, and I say, keep doing your job. You're doing a great job, and thank you very much for your service.
You're very welcome.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Moving on to number 24, vote to expand up to 4,500 in town council reserve funds account 001132-578100, which will be reimbursed to the town in full by National Grid for the cost to mail out a letter outlining the mass save program and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The subcommittee voted favorable to move this forward, 3 to nothing.
Any discussion by council? Counselor McEddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, why would the town want to put a town mass save on one of our letterheads? That would be my first question. And this is going to cost $1 per letter? That would be my another question through you to the town manager. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
Um, could you just articulate how you got $1 per letter?
Well, what is it, 4,500 households? Is that what it is? Am I wrong on that?
I, I didn't.
I could be wrong.
I didn't see that. I'm just asking you a question, Counselor, as to what the 4,500 was.
That's what I thought I read.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let Peg Dean explain the rest.
Come. Mr. Peg Dean?
Uh, to avoid the burden, the burden to the town to have to mail this out, we would, um, hire the mailing service that we use for the, um, the tax bills, uh, and so it's the postage per house plus the, the service charge to be able to mail it. So it does come out to about a dollar per household.
Can you please explain what Mass Save is for the citizens of Southbridge?
Yes. Mass Save is a program that was created, uh, with the state for National Grid to, um, charge all of its customers a very small amount to be able to then incentivize, uh, weatherization and improvements to, uh, their use, electricity use. So over time, uh, they're using that money to be able to advertise, um, you know, a lot of mini split incentives out there, right? $10,000 for a mini split, um, if you first get the weatherization audit. Um, you get, um, you know, blown insulation. You can get all sorts of work done on your house to then reduce your, your electrical bills, your gas bills, your heating bills, whatever that is, your, your summer air conditioning. Uh, I highly encourage people to take advantage of this. I've heard counselors say, oh, I had this done a year or two ago. You can be eligible for another energy audit. There are new incentives out there for you to be able to take advantage of. So, uh, any, anything we can do to help reduce the taxpayers' bills outside of our own taxes, uh, we, we highly encourage it, and of course, we care about the housing stock in town.
If I'm, if I may add information, there was a resident at the top of Lebanon Hill that wanted to go split units, replace his heating system. The price was $17,000 in Mass Save, picked up $15,000 of it. My point of asking you, some councils like to put a negative connotation to something that is so positive for the residents of Southbridge that they will profit. They do not have to pay for the whole installation of a heating system. So I think that's the point I'm trying to get across on the TV where citizens, when they get this in their envelope with their tax bill, they can save themselves a lot of money. There's a lot of free services for insulating and weatherizing. I'm very well versed in it, only because I'm a contractor, but that's a great idea to pack those envelopes with positive things for our citizens. Thank you. Any further? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I wasn't putting any negative connotation, connotation on it. I have used Mass Save before. I think it's a great program. Mass Save sends me letters all the time. I just, my question is, why are we putting, putting it out of town letterhead? That was my main question. Uh, I also want to point out that I was not going directly to the department head, as some councils have reminded me on Facebook that I should not go directly to the department head, and so I was going through the town manager. So that was my only question. Why are we putting town letterhead on a Mass Save program? It's a private company, as far as I know, and I think that they should, I have no problem with Mass Saves.
Stop repeating yourself, Counselor. State what you want to hear, please.
I've used it before myself. Thank you.
Any other discussion by any of the councils? Counselor Rivas?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question about the letter. Will it be in multiple languages when we send it out to our residents?
Peg, uh, the question was, is it going to be in multiple languages?
Yeah, I was hoping it was in the package.
It should be in the package.
It's bilingual.
Oh, I, yes. I didn't see it. Sorry. Sorry.
Counselor Shinia?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The disappointing part about this discussion, a lot of discussions, is that we fully vented this during subcommittee, and then we're back here again, fully venting this again, the same questions again. So, yeah, I, sometimes I say to myself, what good is having a subcommittee meeting if we're going to just rehash this all at a council meeting? This was fully vented, same questions were asked. Who's going to pay for it? Who's going to reimburse us? How come we're doing this? You know? And then with Mass Save. Mass Save is a program that provides energy, efficient services, and incentives to Massachusetts residents, business, and communities. The program is funded by energy efficiency fees on gas, electric bills. The program partners with various gas and electric utilities and energy efficient companies. The goal of the program is to reduce energy waste, help Massachusetts achieve its climate goal, and I am glad that we can be part of that process by having Mass Save go on our letterhead. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Moving on to 25, vote to authorize a transfer request of $1,180.12 from account 001499-530000, specialized services to account 001499-527000. Rentals for DPW to rent a scissor lift and for the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinia. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, 4-0 in favor of.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the reason I ask questions about these is because at the subcommittee report, the councils say, well, we're going to talk about it when the agenda comes up, and then when the agenda comes up, all I hear is, we voted for it 4 to 0, so that's why I ask questions. So this scissors lift is going to be for the community center, I believe, through you to the town.
Again, this was vented at the subcommittee. It's for the heating systems to work on. That's why they need a scissors lift inside the thing. Would you like to comment further?
Yeah.
And elaborate even further in subcommittee?
Through you. I'm gladly answering questions in the public. I, I completely forgot the 4,500 because out of all the issues that I've dealt with in eight weeks, I missed that email, so my apologies, Counselor McEddy, for not being able to quickly think about it.
Let the town manager finish.
No, it's just an apology. I didn't, I, I just hadn't thought about the 4,500, so I wasn't trying to be flip. Uh, that's my only point. In regards to this issue, we are aware of certain, uh, reports that had come to us about issues at the community center, issues with the senior center, things that have not been handled in months when I come aboard. So we work, and I said earlier today that we have a partnership now with the school department. The school department comes down with rich, and we say, hey, we have to look at these doors at the DPW. We have to look at the heating system at, no, I'm sorry, the doors at the community center as well as a leak, just a leak in the community center. When Mark Lutoy gets there, he looks and he says, you have a bigger problem than a leak. You have no heat in this unit.[1782.53] You have no heat in this unit. That unit that's leaking has this, and that other part that's going to circulate here is disconnected. So you have no heat in a community center that is also serves as our emergency shelter, and it is October 1st. But the school system says, we're going to work on it. Rich works with the school department. And we say, we need a scissors lift to be able to get up to that unit to be able to fix it. School department does not have a scissors lift, which they should. DPW, the town, does not have a scissors lift, which we should. Or at least, we should have one unit in this community so that we can work. So working together, because the school department has CO2 connect monitors in the school system that have to be replaced, we said, let's rent it for a month. Let's fix the community center in partnership. Let's also take care of the CO2 detectors. And it's going to cost us $1,100 to rent this unit for a month. We don't have enough money in the account that he has to be able to fully fund the rental. So we're asking for a transfer. And at some point, we may end up requesting a purchase of one. And if Rich has anything else to add, that's what we have.
DPW Director Rich Benoit.
Correction. So the cost for rental for the month was $1,500. It's $1,495. So just a brief update on this situation. Myself and Mark Latoy from the schools department, maintenance department, have spent some time at the rec center. One of the large heaters has been repaired with the use of this lift that we rented. Also, in the process of that, we found some issues with heat being transferred through the baseboard systems in the building. We found that there is a misplaced thermostat on the backside of the building that was preventing heat from getting to the COPS for Kids room in the back corner. That is going to be taken care of by our department. We'll be able to take care of that in-house. While we were there, we found that there was a lack of heat in the front of the building, which was caused by a mislabeled breaker in the electrical panel that was marked unknown. So it was off. That particular breaker controlled the main circulator pump for the front part of the building. So we rectified that situation as well. So in conjunction with this rental, the deal that we made as one department helping another was that DPW would rent the lift, and the school would assist us with the work. And also, we would assist the school with the use of the lift.
Mr. Benoit, did you say earlier that it's going to take $1,400?
It was $1,495, if my memory is correct.
$1,400?
To rent it, but we needed a transfer because we didn't have enough money in the account.
So we had money available in the account. The transfer is to cover the extra costs that we did not have in that account.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions of the DPW director? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 26. Vote to authorize the transfer request of $980 in FY24. Funds from account 001911-517200, group insurance, and $1,470 from account 001911517200-300, group insurance school, to pay the FY23 invoice in the total amount of $2,450 not encumbered in FY in the end of the year.
So moved.
Is the motion?
Second.
By Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion? General Gov.
It was recommended for approval, General Gov.
Any further discussion? I want to remind everybody, it takes a two-thirds vote. Rule call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shinier?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 27. Vote to approve transfer request, $810 from account number 00115955800, miscellaneous materials expense, to account 00115957610. Other legal to cover remaining balance of FY23. Legal bills cable to cover by encumbered funds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Ortiz. General Gov? Just an explanation.
Yes. This is just a transfer, not the payment on the bill.
Right. Yeah, no, the transfer was recommended. The payment of the actual bill was postponed in subcommittee. Thank you.
Any discussion or transfer? You've done all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to, let's, we'll take these out of order. Counselors for? Counsel Rivas.
So I want to start by talking about the Ruth Wells Art Center program. I went to casting shadows for artist Caitlin Tupper. It was a Masquerade Party at this art center. We have such a great resource at the art center. They have such great events for our community and really engaging with the arts in our community. Gateway Players performs out of the art center. It's something, it's sort of a treasure in our community. So I encourage people to become members and to follow their Facebook page for future events. But that was a great event. A local artist that was highlighted, and many people in our community attended. So I just wanted to give a little shout out to them. I also attended the Women-Elected Municipal Leadership Conference in Marlboro on the 29th, where I met many other women leaders across the Commonwealth from different towns. We had a speaker, former Governor Jane Swift was the keynote speaker there, talking about a lot of different situations and issues that women leaders face across the Commonwealth, really talking about being mentors to younger women and encouraging women to participate in leadership and municipal government. It was a great event. And if anyone wants to ask me questions about it, it really is important to have women leaders in our voices in government and to encourage women on committees in our town to participate. And so I got a lot out of that session, and I hope to share some of that wisdom with some of our town employees and other women leaders on our school committee and on our committees, to really encourage women, and especially younger women, to participate and to run and do all of those things. And I appreciate MMA for offering these opportunities for us as leaders in our community to learn and grow with other leaders across the state, really talking to other communities about issues that they're facing, similar to ours in a lot of different ways. So I encourage our young or newly-elected counselors to attend the MMA sessions. They have the annual conference in January. I learned a great deal when I attended last year. These are opportunities for us to collaborate with other communities and learn from them, people that have been in government and municipal government for a long time, and other communities that have similar challenges as we do. So I encourage that. I want to thank those who attended the Southbridge Democratic Town Committee Hispanic Heritage Month event at the community center. It was a dance-a-thon that we had to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month that ended yesterday and, you know, just celebrating the Latinos and Hispanic people in our community, which is really important. And so I appreciate those that were able to attend. Thank you, Counsel Daniels. And I want to encourage everybody to come join us at Red Ribbon Month event at the Tri-Community YMCA, which will be held on October 28th. It'll be a fall family event, a resource fair. And it will be sponsored by our town manager Substance Abuse Committee. And we'll have speakers, lots of different information that we're going to share, activities for parents, for adults, for teens, and for little ones, really for the whole family, and making sure that we tackle some of the issues in our town around substance abuse. That's all. Thank you.
Counsel Shinia.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend a grand opening of the Seven Hills facility down at the American Optical Company. And I just want to thank them for inviting me. Going to that grand opening enlightened me a little bit of what actually the Family Resource Center does in Seven Hills and how important it is to have services like that to help people in need in this community. Sometimes we are quick to make judgment on the service industry that comes into our community. But going here and seeing what they do and seeing the importance of work that they do for our community and making people's lives much, much better in our community, and I thank them for being here and working with our community to make lives better. And that's it tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Mike Eddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I wanted to thank Counsel Rivas for going to the public hearing in Boston for the Thrive Act. I did look at, I watched a little bit of it on YouTube. It was interesting. Like to hear more about it at some point. I also got some constituents' calls. The sidewalk on Marcy Street, I know the town manager has been looking into it. They would just like to have an update on that, see if that's moving along. There's been some noise complaints in town. I think the residents' main complaint is when they call in a noise complaint and the police department drives by, but they want them to actually stop and tell the person who's creating the noise to stop. Also, I've gotten some calls about the town website. A lot of the minutes of all boards and committees are need uploading, need to be updated. I know it's not all the committee's fault. I know there's a couple of committees that I was the chair of that I updated, and they're still not on there. So if we could take a look at it, I'd appreciate it. I mean, going back, I look at the liquor licensing board, there's been no minutes since October 2022. So anyway, the last thing I wanted to say that I think that at some point, we should address the hiring of town employees and the council's role in the hiring process. The town manager interprets the charter one way. Some counselors charter 424. The definition of a town officer, some counselors and constituents interpret it a different way. So I think it's something that I would, eventually, I'd like to see if we could get it on the general government and at least discuss it, exactly what does the town officer mean? Does that mean town employees? Is that a specific definition? I think it's something that the counselors should decide. And that's it. Thank you.
Counsel Mike Eddy.
Thank you very much. I didn't have anything tonight until I decided I wanted to talk about subcommittees. I think the majority of the people up here, I would say, appreciate subcommittees. There was some sarcasm about it, and then there were some serious points about subcommittee. I think everybody should be reminded that the town council has approved a lot of projects from cable access to outfit a lot of the rooms in this town hall with very easy-to-automate video cameras. And it's actually at a very cheap price, especially because the end result is transparency in government. Government that has subcommittees that allow citizens to be appointed and put on those boards to vet items and to save time. When we talk about wasting time by asking the same questions at a town council meeting that the same counselor has already asked at other meetings that have been televised, put on local access on spectrum cable, put on YouTube, put on the town website, and are no anything but transparent, and forcing department heads to come here and defend themselves as if they've never told anybody the information ever? Well, I didn't come this far to come this far. And my opinion is, that's a stupid approach. And I don't care what your rebuttal is to that. Just get the job done for Southbridge. You're going to get rid of free money from National Grid because you want to waste everybody's time. Thank you very much.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I know the chair had brought up Cristo earlier this evening. My condolences go out to the family. I talked to Bob today, and the gentleman was 108 years old, and we were just talking, I think it was not this weekend, the past weekend, about doing another proclamation when he was 109, turns 109 in the month of December. Amazing man. The gentleman was born in 1914. This is on the onset of World War I, when he was born. And you can imagine what our country was going through and others at this point in time. He's also held many patents, specifically one for the NASA flights, I think it was in 1969. He's got three amazing children and four amazing grandchildren, along with a bunch of other great-grandchildren. And my condolences go out to the family, as I told Bob this evening or this morning. And thoughts and prayers are with Cristo this evening, and as always, and may rest in peace. I attended the Seven Hills along with the town manager and Counsel Shinier. It was an amazing event, and I'm glad to see it in our community. And he said a lot already, but I was going to speak on, but thank you. November 6th, I plan on coming up as the Veterans Council President to give our semi-annual brief on the parks. And you'll start seeing some work happening in the next two, three weeks. A lot of stuff is going into the World War Memorial Park. And that being said, the ribbon-cutting ceremony for that park is at 10:30 on November 11th. And the ceremony, the Veterans Day ceremony itself will be on November 11th, directly after the ribbon-cutting. And last but not least, I invited all the town counselors, obviously, to this event on the 11th, and also to the luncheon. Please RSVP, and if you're a veteran out there. We are having, the Veterans Council of Southbridge, along with Dow Automotive, Green Meadows, Harrington Hospital, Hotel Conference Center are having a veterans luncheon that will kick off at 12 o'clock on the 10th of November, the Marine Corps Birthday. May I mention that one more time? And go from there. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Counsel Ortiz.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. Last Saturday, I had the opportunity to go to the Electronics Entire Take Back Day down at the DPW, which was sponsored by the Health Department. I had a number of items, and for a minimal cost, I was able to get them all properly disposed of and taken care of. This is a wonderful service. It's encouraged by the town, and I can't say enough about it. Great people down there to help you out. And, you know, the stuff, for lack of a better term, is no longer in my storage room, and it's, I'm sure it's being taken care of properly because it's a town function. They were telling me that there is a hazardous waste day in December, which is a much wider scope event. So I encourage citizens to take advantage of that. And they were also telling me that it's possible that there'll be a limit to the number of hazardous waste days starting next year. I would hope that the council would look into that, and perhaps a budget item could be created to maintain the current number of waste days. Because my concern is that if there are less waste days, then people are going to have to wait longer, and perhaps they won't dispose of their trash properly. So maybe that's something we can look into in the future. I was recently down at the World Memorial Park on Elm Street next to the fire station. It really is a very beautiful and solemn area, led by Counselor Adams in his other, one of his other capacities. He's coordinated a wonderful dedicated effort to the veterans from the First World War. It's really worth taking a walk through it and taking some time to reflect. I encourage people to do it, especially with Veterans Day coming up shortly. It's really something that should be done. I was pleased to support, and I am continue to be pleased to support and advocate our town being a partner with our citizens. And that means working on the grants that do more than just take care of the infrastructure, the forestry grants, the Mass Save grants, that sort of a thing. I echo Counsel Lazo in his talking about the postcards at the Old Town. I've seen those as well. And it really, the town really has a history. I mean, just real quickly, we have Pine Street, Maple Street, Chestnut Street, Elm Street, and there's probably a few other trees in there, Birch Street, now that I'm thinking about it. You know, that's the way the town was. And people talk about wanting the town to be the way it was. way it was. Well, there's no reason why this grand old name can't be beautiful like it used to be. And doing something like supporting the forestry grant and having management of the entire spectrum to take care of the plantings in town, I think is worthwhile. When councillor Shinier and Lazo and I were youngsters, the big deal was watching the tree spraying machine come down Elm Street and come down Everett Street and just spray the trees with this big gun. And I remember, you know, it was some kind of, probably a poison that they were using to spray the trees, and I remember it being sweet and staining the cars, and that was the extent of the management, as far as I could see. So having something like this now, I think, really makes a difference. And I'd like to personally thank Steve Brady, and also on behalf of the PND Subcommittee, thank him for the work that he's done on that, both in planting trees and encouraging forestry for the whole, for the whole town to be taken care of. Hannah, welcome back. You're going to do a bang-up job. I know you will. You're a good asset for the town, so definitely welcome back. It may sound like I'm a Pollyanna for this town, and if that's the case, then I'll wear that label. I believe there's more to our job as councillors than just taking care of the hard stuff. I think taking care of the no-brainers is just as important as well, and the no-brainers really do tend to benefit the town of Southbridge and therefore its taxpayers. I do advocate for people that rent in town as well. In stopping by the assessors' office a little while ago, I was able to find out that the majority of residents in town live in rental units, and you can bet that they're paying their fair share in terms of rental costs, and therefore they're paying their taxes as well. So I don't forget that. I recognize that, and I will definitely support anything that will help all the taxpayers in town, which includes our renters. In terms of the charter and people talking about the town manager, this just came up really quickly here toward the end of the meeting. I'd just like to say personally that I advocate for a strong manager form of government. I think the charter is pretty explicit about what is and is not the duties of the council. And I, why have a town manager if we're not going to let the town manager do the job? It's that simple. So we have a town manager. We make final decisions based upon the recommendations of the town manager, but it's the town manager that formulates that information, puts it together, and runs the council on a day-to-day, runs the town on a day-to-day basis, so that we, the council, as volunteers, this is not paid, as volunteers and elected officials, can then make the decisions that we feel are in the best interest of the town. But you need a strong town manager to take that into account, to be able to do that work. And why have one if we're not going to use them? Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well said. I'd like to take a moment to go to 28, discuss next meeting day. Councillor Marketti?
Next meeting is Monday, October 30th, 2023, 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 30. Vote to enter into executive session pursuant with MGL Chapter 30A, 21, 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares litigation update. I'd like to just remind everybody, the council will adjourn from the executive session and will not return into open session.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call.
I'm sorry. Who, councillor Shinier?
Yes.
Sorry. Councillor Shinier? Councillor Shinier?
Yes.
Do you vote to go into executive session? Councillor Daniel?
Yes.
Councillor Lazo?
Yes.
Councillor Marketti?
Yes.
Councillor Montigny?
Yes.
Councillor Ortiz?
Yes.
Councillor Rivas?
Yes.
Thank you. We adjourn to executive session.